Okay, I'd like to call this regular meeting to order. First item on the agenda is public input period. If there's anyone in the gallery that wishes to address counsel, we have two minutes of our time. Please come forward, state your name, and just the value of your wisdom.
Hi.
Hi.
Patricia Marsh-Palston. Did I give my address?
We're good.
Okay. I just came tonight to comment on the Cook Avenue development plans. And I have come before you other times talking about affordability and housing, et cetera. So, um, the wish list that they described that you are working on, I think is really, really appropriate in that you're helping define what is not just affordable housing, but attainable, livable housing. And as you probably know, affordable housing with a strict definition is thirty percent of your gross income going to housing costs. But those housing costs in that definition is strictly the mortgage, interest, principal, and your, uh, third thing, sorry. It's just principal, interest, and property tax. Okay? So, you go to the bank, they look at what your income tax says is your gross income, and they make a calculation. Okay, your mortgage. You could handle a mortgage up to such and such amount. But, of course, we know, when it comes to a house, there's a lot more to a house than just the mortgage. There's insurance, there's property, there's furnishings, there's many other costs. So that for someone to have a home that's affordable and attainable, the true costs are much more than the mortgage. And that is something very much to keep in mind, in that, you know, someone who, say, has an income of... Uh, next page. You know, the median housing in our area... Sorry, it's kind of...
That's our thing.
In our area, if you're looking at a ten percent down, five percent interest rate for a median-priced home in our region, you know, to be able to purchase a home for three hundred thousand dollars, you would need a gross income of approximately seventy thousand dollars. So, if it's higher than that, then of course it correspondingly goes higher. That to, uh, to be, have thirty percent of your income go to your housing, your mortgage, to purchase a home in the four hundred thousand dollar range, you would need a gross income of eighty thousand dollars a year. So, we're talking about, you know, significant incomes, and when you think about, if somebody is working minimum wage forty hours a week, their gross income is about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. That puts them in the mortgage affordability frame of about ninety-five thousand dollars and less. So, and that's not counting the other costs. So, when, when a development is talking about costs of two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, three-hundred thousand dollars, it really has to be thought of of, well, who is that affordable for? And what else is making it attainable? Is there going to be mortgages that are organized? I know many of these things may be outside of your purview, but these are things that do happen in developments. Are there appliances? What's the level of finishing? Are the houses, are the homes completely finished? Or does somebody who is, say, middle-income or low-income need to go in, landscape, appliances, flooring, lighting, you know? What other expenses are they going to encounter to be able to move into what's being described as affordable housing? So, I think clarity on the actual finished, what the actual housing is going to be, a recognition that, um, you know, the highest median price for a single, for detached single-family home in Roseland was in two thousand and eight, and that was two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. Now, that's the median, right? But, that's telling you that housing that is priced over the median is not affordable. So, it's something to think about. So, again, free-market housing, it's good that we have builders who are wanting to build housing. The question is, how can they make it useful, attainable, and relevant for people who want to purchase homes in Roseland? And that just that housing is more than just, um, a cheap building. You know, we want housing that people want to invest in, that they want to be able to then move on to other levels of housing in the community, and that it meets their needs. It meets their social needs, their cultural needs, it contributes to the community, and that it allows them to participate in their neighborhood. So, just a price, to me, is not enough. And I know that, that through the articles I've read, um, and talking to different counselors, that you are striving to make it, um, a community-relevant development, and I think that's really great. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else that wishes to address counsel, public input? No? Seeing none, motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Speer seconded by Thatcher, discussion on the agenda, seeing none, all in favor. Posed, carried. Adoption of the minutes, motion of the minutes of the public hearing held on the twenty-eighth to be adopted, move by. Moore seconded by. Speer, discussion on the minutes. Counselor Moore.
Yeah, I'd like the minutes to reflect that I recommended the hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of the Economic Development Fund that's at the LCI to remain with the LCI for their ongoing projects. That was in response to Counselor Wallace's request for input from counsel. That was my input.
Can't say it, wasn't it?
Worship, was this at the public hearing?
This was at the, no, October twenty-eighth.
Public hearing, this is public...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing the regular minutes, it was twenty-eighth. Sorry, wrong, jumped ahead.
Okay, on the public hearing, all in favor. Posed, carried. Minutes of the regular meeting of counsel be adopted, move by. Moore seconded by. Thatcher, Counselor...
That was my comment.
Thank you. So, that will be reflected? I wasn't here, so I can't...
Um, I just know there were a couple of situations where the minutes reflected that we didn't vote on that, and I guess when I was acting on your behalf, that maybe, I guess I was just unsure if I neglected to call those questions, or...
No, I think that that was, that was just how staff records it, because of the, in the staff report, that would have been the motion probably that was passed.
Oh, okay, okay.
And if you're not voting on it, then you didn't vote on it. Is that correct?
Thank you, I just didn't want to be inconveni...
Not being here and...
Yeah, I thought we voted on...
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So, all right, we're all good. So, with that adjustment to the minutes, all in favor. Posed, carried, thank you. Minutes of the committee, the whole meeting on the November fourth, be adopted, and the staff number regarding staff recommendations concerning proposed resolutions. Moved by Counselor Speer, seconded by Counselor Thatcher. Any discussion? Start there.
No.
Nope.
The only, the only thing I'd say, that motion reads a little oddly, it should say that we're adopting the recommendations. That the minutes...
We're adopting the minutes.
That the minutes be adopted, and that the staff number regarding the staff recommendations concerning the proposed resolution be adopted.
That's, yeah, that's a little bit, I understand that, but that would be what we're doing. And when we, certainly when we adopt the minutes, we adopt the recommendations of the minutes, correct?
It's just awkwardly...
Father Higginson.
I'd just ask you some clarification there.
Yeah.
Are you adopting the recommendations that were in the minutes, or are you adopting the recommendations that were put forward by staff after?
Right there.
By staff after.
That's...
Mm-hmm.
Did you read, were you familiar with...
It was unphoned clear.
With what? With four C?
Four C and...
Yeah, I got it right in front of me.
Okay, and the staff responded to the, uh...
Yes, and then they...
And we have to...
Wasn't that for tonight, for the...
That's what staff took away from and brought back to counsel. And if counsel agrees, that's what they will be bringing forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody okay with that? Is that...
Yeah.
Okay? All right, so on that, all in favor. Posed, motion's carried. Classification of information, that the resolution passed out through twenty-eight thirteen in camera regarding testing be classified for confidential, non-confidential, move by Moore, seconded by. Speer, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Posed, motion's carried. Delegations, Mr. Miller, Sustainability Commission.
Thank you, your worship, counsel, staff. Hello. I wanted to give you a very brief update on a trip, oh, and the chair of the Innovative Education Committee sends us regrets, he has a family member of Nelson. So, I'm going to give you a quick update on our trip to Royal Roads. We went to visit the campus with some preliminary work done. We went and presented our idea of making Ross in a hub of learning, and became, were, with preparations from the staff, made their leadership challenge, where students from learners at Royal Roads in master's programs in communication, leadership, and community sustainability were put together. And they looked at our problem and worked on it all week. And on Friday, we were presented with five different sets of recommendations from five different teams. And it was a tremendous opportunity for us to have some outside perspectives on this whole concept. And I think the most notable, while there's a couple of nice outcomes that came from that trip, one was that of the thirty learners there, I think half of them are going to move to Ross, and they spent the week immersed in, in the joys of our community, and got to think about what a great idea this is. They fully endorsed it. We got some great critical thinking on there with a broad variety of plans that, and recommendations that we're taking forward into a new planning session coming up the next few weeks. But perhaps the most exciting news of that is that we're entering talks with Royal Roads on the idea of becoming, having Ross become host of satellite campus of some of their programs. So, it was from the five-hundred-dollar investment that counsel made to underwrite a portion of our trip to the coast, I think it was well worth it, nothing, you know, that the, the chickens haven't come home to roost yet, what's the thing I'm saying? So, but it was in terms of great information, we got superb value from that in terms of promoting, and the potential for the Royal Roads campus is tremendous. So, that's, that's just a quick status update. We thank you again. I think we reflected in our minutes of last meeting that the contribution was appreciated. And I can't help but take this opportunity to, just to say that we continue to work on these programs and struggle to have two cents to rub together to, to move things forward anyway. So, we're trying to do good work, it's a struggle, everything becomes, we've got a planning process, I was wondering for the fifty bucks for pizza, that kind of, I say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but we're struggling to try and find, you know, some of the resources and backing to keep moving things forward. But, that's our status update.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Miller?
He said there's thirty, thirty people in attendance at that meeting?
Yeah, there's a core, there's a cohort of thirty learners who are taking different master's programs at Royal Roads, some of which were in the communication program, the leadership program, and the sustainable communities program. And they mix them together and have, and form mixed teams with those disciplines and have them work on this idea. They were so excited about it because this was, very often they're given problems that exist in a, in a community or in an organization, and this one was basically a green idea that had yet to be fully fleshed out. And we went into that, in that context, and the faculty at Royal Roads was happy to have it at that stage. It was quite a different environment for them. Yeah, so it was great.
Thank you. Any further? No, thanks very much for the presentation.
Cheers.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to roll? Recommendation with staff for decision, request for decision, a development variance permit for nine oh one Redstone. Is it a motion that counsel approved, the development variance for nine oh one Redstone? Move by Thatcher, seconded by. Moore, discussion on that?
I have some questions.
Just Thatcher.
Looking at that lot, I don't have any problem with the, with the variance. It's such an odd-shaped lot, and to put a house onto that lot, it takes quite, it's quite, have to, quite a, quite a challenge. And to put a carport there or a garage, it's, uh, there's no, I don't see any problem. There's enough room there for snow storage in that, in that corner, so I don't have any problem with this variance at all.
Counselor Moore.
Oh, yeah, there was the mention that snow, existing snow storage would have to be altered, but I didn't, I didn't see what way it would be altered. Was there a solution on how it would be?
Stacy.
There's a snow easement registered on the property, and you can't build on that snow easement currently. So, that has to be altered by adding a clog in the right-of-way that says, a two-car garage of this width by that length is permitted within the snow easement. That's how it'll be altered.
Okay, so we don't have to deal with any snow storage issues for the city?
No, next door to the lot is huge storage, you know?
Yeah, let me see this. Right now it is.
It's just the actual document.
But there's really not a lot there anyway, next door.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just hope that we can include a chipping bucket, so when we're sitting on the seventeen T-box, we can chip into a bucket or something. Anyway, I'm just kidding. So, on that...
No, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I missed you.
Yes, you did.
So, those of us who use the trails know that the old Rubberhead is right there, so, and you can see it right on the map where it drops down to the creek there, and then goes up the other side where the mayor would like to golf over from. So, as a trail user, what is the situation? Is that trail going to be deleted, or is there going to be, you know, an alternate trail to kind of connect all that?
I'll give that to staff, but the trail already is there, that now goes past Carrie Fisher's house behind Seventeen Green and it connects...
Yeah, yeah, Louis Joe is there, but this is a different...
Oh, no, this, this, this would connect, this is part of the Rubberhead now that goes past, well, it's Louis Joe as well, but it goes past Council Fisher's house along Seventeen.
I know, I use that section all the time. It's a different section. This is where it splits off and goes down and goes up, which joins in...
All right, I'll tell you what, I probably didn't do a good job of explaining that.
Worship, that trail's on private property, and we can't trespass on private property. So, it was not a trail that was negotiated into any plan.
But there certainly is an alternative.
So, the alternative has been built on Louis Joe.
Okay, that answers my question?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the trail is no longer an answer to the question.
Louis Joe. Anything further on the motion, all in favor? Posed, motion's carried. Sorry, I didn't, I forgot you there. Your request for decision regarding the waiving of fees for the arena lounge, staff request of the council waiving associated fees for the arena lounge to encourage development and educational partnership with Selkirk. Is there a mover to that? Move by Counselor Bloom, he's second.
Second to the discussion.
Counselor Thatcher. Discussion, Counselor Bloom.
It just seems that ultimately, we'll get more money and opportunity out of the situation if we say yes to it, so...
Okay, thank you. Thatcher.
Well, I think it's great that we can bring in some educational opportunities to, to the city, and this is just, you know, making that much more attainable for a lot of people without raising the prices of the courses.
Counselor Moore.
Well, I'm interested in, in, I like the idea of the partnership, for sure. I'm just curious about it if we just, I mean, we're, we're trying to make our facilities pay for themselves, and here's an enterprise that brings in money, but as far as I can tell from this, we don't get any of it, right? If we give them rent-free, yes, they're offering the courses, it's a benefit to our community, as you say. I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the benefit to us is in the long term. We'll have janitorial expense, we'll have staff expense of one sort or another, we don't know what the additional print expenses or the advertising that was, was mentioned. I didn't hear an exact dollar amount of any of that potential. And then, I was looking at it too, I don't quite understand the, when they say their pricing would be forty-nine dollars if we give it to them for free, or sixty-nine, you know, for the French class, for example, if, if we don't, you know, that's, you know, that's twenty bucks extra per person, right? And if you take the rent at seven hundred dollars, that's thirty-five people, they would be paying that, you know? So, I'm just curious about what they think their, you know, their enrollment is going to be on that. And I was just going to toss out the idea that we charge them a nonprofit rate, but I don't know if a nonprofit, if we have a nonprofit rate for the arena lounge, I know we do for some of our other facilities. You know, maybe just not completely free, but to bring in something to just establish the precedent that, you know, no such thing as a free lunch.
Correct. So, you're speaking against the motion?
Well, I want to, I, I'd like to hear the discussion. I like the concept a lot, I do like the concept a lot, but I feel we have an obligation to, you know, try and, try and get some, some return on our facilities that cost us a lot of money. And this is another one of those things where it's something that not everybody in the community is going to want to do, so maybe the people that, that do want to do it have to pay a little bit extra. The, you know, user-pay concept is something to try to move towards, so, but I am curious whether we have a nonprofit rate for, that we could apply to the arena lounge.
Ms. Butler.
Worship, believe that you have the nonprofit rate, they could...
Oh.
Counselor Speer.
Yeah, I, you know, I feel similar, similarly to Counselor Moore in that, you know, I get that, you know, we're, and it's interesting, before I say what I was going to say, it's interesting that, you know, we've got the, you know, the, the task force, the Sustainability Commission, working on kind of trying to bring in some other educational partners so that we can start a learning center in Ross, and or a hub of learning in Ross, and this seems to fit into that whole scheme, but it seems a separate kind of track again. So, just generally, I like to see the conversations around further learning to kind of come together in one purview, whatever, as in the Sustainability Commission. So, I just don't want to see us doing some stuff at the city level, as in the rec department, and some stuff at the Sustainability Commission, and working in second, kind of separated groups rather than having the conversation together. So, that would be my first recommendation, is that we make sure that we're, we're, we're talking to each other. And as far as Selkirk College having, you know, I mean, the benefit of free facilities, does it happen, my first question is, does it happen in the other communities? Are they free? And, so that would be my first question. Secondly, what will it cost us to, what, would the cost to the city be for cleaning and the other work that the public works has to do with regards to the rental space or the non-rental space?
Okay, I'll just stop you there, Ms. Butler.
Yep.
When it comes to the cleaning and, and the public works involvement, if we were to rent it, that's what that seven hundred dollars basically covers, right? But there's always a loss whenever we run a recreational program. Where the conundrum is, is that when Selkirk College offers its courses and trail or council guard, they own buildings in those communities, so they don't have to charge, or they don't have to add that rental cost to their program. So, that's why in trail, they go to a French class of trail, they're going to be paying less than in Roseland if we don't waive the fees.
So...
So, that's, that's where the...
Quite, quite interesting, too, if they run a program in the, in their facility and trail, that's subsidized by the city of Roseland.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh, yeah. Yeah. Counselor Thatcher.
I think the, the biggest problem is, is enrollment. If they have a large enrollment, you know, then we could probably ask for a nominal fee, but if they don't have a, you know, enrollment large enough to pay, pay for that rental, what do, what do they do? Cancel the course, or, I imagine that's what they do, because they wouldn't be able to afford it. So, you know, putting the cart before the horse, I don't know, it's, maybe we should look at a, an enrollment, an enrollment level and then charge anything above that, or...
Well, I think the other thing that we have to remember, too, is this, this would be, well, it's under the guise of learning, it's also a recreation program, right? So, we don't, we have lack, we have a lack of a facility for this type of recreation other than this one, like we, that's ours, it's the one we have. And I, I think that, actually, I think the recommendation makes sense. I agree a little bit about the, with the nonprofit rate, but if this is the nonprofit rate and we're waiting the nonprofit rate, we should all know that, and the numbers are seven hundred dollars, we should all know that. Counselor Speer.
Um, yeah, I just had it, and then I lost it again. Sorry, come back, come, come back to me.
Yeah, I might not.
Sorry.
Counselor Moore.
Okay, if, if they are talking about the buildings that they own, they do have an expense on those buildings, right? That's not free, so they're, they're already, you know, building in there, they're, they're covering that. So, that's a little, kind of a red herring argument, as far as I'm concerned. What I would be willing to do, because I do support this program, is to say to them, yes, we'll give you, you know, free this year, you know, one-time-only trial and see how it goes, but with the understanding that, you know, we would probably need to look at charging them some sort of use fee for the use of the building next year, you know, the program works.
Well, this is for fourteen, though, right?
Yeah, this is for, this, I mean, this is for school, whatever the cycle is, yeah, through, through May, right?
I believe this is the winter scheduling through the January...
Well, this is January through May.
Yeah.
Of fourteen.
That's twenty-fourteen, yeah.
So, that's, so that is a year, so I think it's...
That's what I'm saying.
We can, yeah, we'll let them know that that's, we don't have to do it by this motion, but we just let them know that that's...
I just don't want them thinking they have free facilities here forever and ever. If it works great, hopefully they'll be willing to share.
I understand, I think that's Spirit's problem. Counselor Bloom.
Um, so, I mean, as you guys have seen generally, I think of things in terms of dollars and cents, okay, is this going to make sense? Let's see, what's it going to add up to? And so, automatically, I clicked into that when I first looked at this, but, you know, ultimately, what I came around to, so I started out with, similar to what Counselor Moore was saying, but what I came around to is that this is definitely an offering that adds substance to what Roseland can offer, and that ultimately, that that could be worth more than, you know, just the seven hundred dollars. The fact that, you know, we're competing, essentially, we're competing with the other Selkirk College locations, that, you know, sure, you could divide it up between everything they add up, and, I mean, everything they offer, and, and, you know, say that that doesn't cost them expense, even if it's in their own building, but it's just that those expenses are previously justified, they're already justified based on whatever other program they have. You know, it's not necessarily that this particular program costs them money by using their, their facilities. And so, for us to compete with that, basically, I believe that we do have to be able to offer this situation, at least to get it started. And as far as comparing it with what the Sustainability Commission was offering, well, you know, that hasn't started up yet. And ultimately, this Selkirk College situation, they're already a very much established college, they're very well-marketed, and, you know, there's that credibility and establishment, and it's already curriculum running. So, for us to be an extra satellite, I think there's a lot of value to that, and it could potentially actually bring us, maybe not directly to, you know, our recreation department, but I think it ultimately will bring in, in the grand scheme of things, more money and more value to the community.
Thank you very much, well said. Anything further? Counselor Moore, this is number three.
I'm just curious if Counselor Bloom, who I think started this motion, would entertain an amendment to it, that it would be free for this year, and in our communication to Selkirk to say yes for this trial period, but next year we'd like to reconsider and perhaps charge...
But I think the request is only for what the request is, so I don't think we need to, we need to add that, but I think we could, we could just, I think we could just say that in our agreement, we could just...
Pilot project.
Our worship in our communication for the college, we will make that known.
But that can be outside of the motion, it doesn't have to be, because of the request. Okay? And call question on the motion, all in favor. Posed, motion's carried, thank you. Liquor license application for Red Mountain Resorts Wiener Take-All Restaurant on November...
Wait.
Did I? Did I? Oh, Acting Mayor, is that it?
Yep.
Yeah, is there a motion that Council doesn't make, members of Council move by? Moore seconded by. Boney, any discussion on Acting Mayor list, yes?
Yes, I think this is a perfect example of something that we don't need to do every year. I would think we could just amend our procedure by law and state that the Acting Mayor's schedule is in alphabetical order by council member's surname, and then it would be done.
What if someone wanted to step aside?
Well, they could, they could.
That's why we have a...
They could do it this way, too. This is the same thing. All I'm saying is, if you just do it every year in alphabetical order, we don't have to keep looking at it every year.
I believe that's by legislation.
Isn't that the comfortable discretion?
No, it's in the...
In the past, we have done it this way in order if somebody takes a long vacation or something, and you...
Thank you very much.
Or wants to switch, or...
But you could do it, you could do it if that's alphabetical, doesn't matter.
Part of the reason why this is...
You can remind us of our duty.
That's right, that's very good. So we're taking probably longer than the...
It takes a second.
On Acting Mayor, exactly, all in favor. Posed, carried, thank you. Getting back to the Wiener Take-All Restaurant. Is there a motion that Council recommend the applica, or staff recommends that the application be approved? Is there a mover to that? Move by Boney, seconded by Spear, discussion.
Yep.
It's all great.
Seeing none, all in favor.
Full of comments.
Comment?
I like the idea, I think it's gonna be wonderful. I was just curious, there was no correspondence from Red in our package, which I thought there might have been. And the thing I learned by talking to Mr. Don Thompson, which I didn't see in the package, was that the house is, the facility is actually going to be on wheels. And this is important because... What?
I read that.
Did you read it? I didn't, I didn't read that, I must have missed it. Anyway, but the important thing there is, if it were not on wheels, right? If it were, if it was built on a foundation, then it would need, it would need a different development permit, because the development permit for the area doesn't allow commercial things with foundations. So I thought that was good information. And the other thing is that, you know, we haven't had an update from Red about a lot of their activities. And because this is our watershed, and it's a delicate area that the community's very concerned about, they have an environmentalist on the project, which I think is great, and a forestry person and all that, and I think...
On the project? We're talking about liquor licensing here?
Well, I know, but on the...
Please, one point, thank you.
But this is, we don't get to talk about this very often.
Well, this is not the motion, Counselor. If you wish to talk about their environmental policy and what's going on, then let's talk about it. But right now, we're talking about a Wiener cart.
That's right, we are talking about a Wiener cart. I just thought it was a good thing, that what I was gonna share with Council, that they are doing...
Perhaps you can share with that in Members' Reports. That would be a very good time.
Okay.
All right, on the motion for the liquor license, all in favor. Posed, motion's carried. Information items, the motion to receive and act on the information items as written, subject to input on the various items. So is there a mover to that? Move by? Moore seconded by Spear. Discussion on any letters, A, B, C, D, E, F, G? Counselor Moore.
C, E, H.
C, E, H. Counselor Spear.
No, that's good for me.
Counselor Thatcher.
E.
Got it. Boney? Okay, C, Counselor Moore.
Okay, this is...
Oh, sorry.
You worship, um, staff would like to address F.
Right on, sorry about that, I forgot. C.
Okay, C was Miners Hall renovation. I was looking back that in April, we passed a motion, sort of, that supported the material that they had in this thing. And I'm just curious, question through to staff, there was going to be staff working with RCA C on the draft budget to provoke the attic renovation and the city's upgrades of the roofs and the window, and I'm just wondering if that draft budget has been worked upon.
You worship, the draft budget hasn't been, but we have a meeting with them on Thursday morning.
Okay, so it'd be a good thing for our budget discussions to have all that. Okay, and then the request in the October thirteenth letter is that the RCA C is looking for confirmation of city's plans to move forward with the renos in 2014 and 2015. And it sounded like they had some grants they were anxious to apply for. I don't know the timeline of those grants, but if we're referring this to our budget discussions being what they are, we might not get an answer to them very quickly. And I'm just wondering if staff has a comment on that.
Worship, that will be part of our conversation on Thursday, and depending on what comes out about you, we will move forward quickly or in a timely fashion.
Okay, that's good. And the last thing was the list of federal funding programs that was sent around. It was very helpful, I think it was from Alex Adamanenko's office. Talked about the Canada Cultural Spaces Fund, which could be appropriate for the Miners Hall or the museum. But I was looking at it thinking, because this program, this project for the Miners Hall looks just about ready to go. They have their drawings, they have leather, and I was gonna support that the RCA C be encouraged to go after that grant this year. There's a new five hundred thousand dollar fund out there. Plus, it's through Heritage, which is Heritage Building, you know, kind of thing. I thought that would be a good one for the Miners Hall.
I'm sure on the meeting on Thursday, Ms. Bother can bring that forward to the RCA C.
Well, we just, there may be conflicting desires for applications to that, or maybe we could...
Just a few.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Any further on C? E. Tim, not E as well, let him go.
Let him go.
Well, I thought it was a really good report, it was, you know, well-written. You open your eyes to what the cost to run those, you occur to the arena. And there's a lot, like, there's a lot of good ideas that not gonna cost a lot of money to reduce the energy bill and reduce our greenhouse gases. I see a lot of those things that we should look at, so hopefully we will. And so I'd like to show everyone else to see, but I see, I think it was an excellent report, and there's a lot of stuff we can do there to force significant saves, so...
Yeah, and the recommendation is, do you come up with a staff report regarding this?
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Thatcher. I thought it was really great to get those reports, and I'm hoping that the staff report will be in time for our budget discussions, because we do have, you know, there are some things we could do this year on that. And a question, we've been putting aside fifty thousand dollars, I think, for arena repairs each year. And I'm thinking, you know, they say the total of this was, what, one hundred and forty-three, or one hundred and twenty-three, something like that. So I'm just curious if that money has been actually earmarked for arena? Do we have some money in the fund for being able to do that?
I'd have to confirm that.
Okay, was in our financial plan, but...
Yeah, what we're talking about here is this information coming back with the staff report.
Yeah, oh, I realize, but I'm asking some questions that hopefully will be addressed when staff responds. And if I don't ask them, then we'll be going right in.
I'm sure staff will come up with...
So here's another question that I have. And the reports talked about, it was based on 2010 figures, and I'm just wondering why we didn't have anything more current than 2010 for them, 'cause things have probably changed a bit in three years. Was there any explanation of why the consultants had 2010 instead of...
Worship, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. I did remark that the consumption being up nine percent, ten percent in City Hall was pretty high. But there sounded like lots of good ways to reduce that, so let's look at that. I see, oh, okay, in there, it talked about a great demonstration project would be to do heat capture from City Hall to the pool. And it sounded like they didn't know that we'd already done that. And I was really curious about that, because I, as I recall, we got a grant for thirty thousand dollars and did it, and I think maybe there were some issues with it, but as far as I know, it was still up there. So I'm just curious, one, why they didn't know anything about it, and two, is it no longer up there and functioning at all?
We happen to have the presence of Mr. Alvo, and I'm sure Mr. Alvo can give us a...
Yeah, they were certainly aware that it was there and not operational, and that asked for a, what their recommendation is to get it working.
Okay, 'cause the report sounded like they had no clue.
I gotta be honest, I haven't not read the report yet.
Okay, well, you'd be interested in reading that part, 'cause I was really quite surprised. Then also, I would suggest that we share this with the Energy Task Force, 'cause I think they would be really interested in reading it.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything further on E? Counselor Spear.
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, I don't need to reiterate it, some of the things have already been said, and, yeah, I thought that the reports were very comprehensive and very interesting, and did pull out some of the energy issues and cost-saving potential that we can try and achieve in our city. And one of the things that jumped out at me was the over-lighting. So I'd never really heard of over-lighting so much, but I'd be, yeah. Interesting, if we're spending money on lighting and energy that we don't need to, then certainly that should be one of the first things that we try and clean up, because I thought we don't need to over-do any energy spending, that's for sure. But I'll look forward to hearing from the staff report.
Great, thanks.
To Council, thank you.
Okay, I'll move to H right now, and we'll come back to F, is that all right? So H was the Building Inspector Report, and then I know staff wants to speak to F. So, Building Inspector Report, is Counselor Moore?
Yes, it was. I was very happy to see the building permit reports again, 'cause we haven't seen them since May, so that was nice to have them back. What I liked seeing before was the detailed reports that we used to get, and we didn't get them this time. So in the future, I'd like to see those, so...
Worship, we will be amended.
Great, thank you.
Further on H, all right, going to F, which is the Roslin Winter Carnival. I'll just, Ms. Bother will just let Mr. Alvo speak to that.
Okay, because, well, obviously, we're not in budget discussions yet. I just want to make Council aware of the Winter Carnival. We have tracked in detail the last two years, from 2012, 2013, of... We broke everything out from bobsled to rail jam to ice bar to volleyball to downtown, just the garbage and barricades and running around that we do. And in 2010, our budget amount was six thousand, we spent thirteen. In 2011, our budget amount was sixty-four, and we spent ninety-three. 2012, budget was sixty-four, we spent ninety-eight. And 2013, budget was ninety-five, we spent seventeen. So I just want Council to be aware, the escalating cost of Winter Carnival and the demand that they keep, you know, asking of us for that weekend is increasing, even though it doesn't reflect that in there, you know, it's always, it's basically, you know, we'll do the same as last year. But as you get into the weekend, the demands are a lot higher. The other issue is, the rail jam has really gone up in price. It's gone from three thousand to eight thousand. And two reasons for that is the lack of snow, and we have to haul a lot of snow in. Their volunteer groups don't seem to be as large, so there's a lot more time with our loader required. And in 2013, our loader operator had always volunteered his time for the Saturday, Sunday, and he no longer is interested in volunteering his time. And so we have to charge him out at city rates. So, and I mean, there's still lots of volunteer time that goes into the bobsled and, you know, a couple of other things around town, but I'm gonna say that if we have an average snowfall year and we do, we do the demands or what the Winter Carnival is asking, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in the probably fifteen thousand dollar range. So, you know, if Council wants to make sure we move that forward into the budget year, then that's okay. I just, you know, before you make this decision of yes or no, or, I just want you to be well-aware of the costs that are, that are coming along with that.
Counselor Spear.
Okay, so Darren, if you wouldn't mind just repeating those numbers again. For 2010, it was six thousand, we budgeted, and it was thirteen thousand actual?
Yeah.
Sixty, uh, sixty-four hundred, and then it was ninety-three hundred the next year? Sixty-four, and then what was that?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. And then it was...
2013 was budgeted ninety-five and seventeen.
Ninety-five hundred and seventeen.
And the rail jam, for example, itself, was eighty-four hundred dollars.
Wow.
For the rail jam. The bobsled was forty-three, the ice bar was fifteen.
Hundred.
Fifteen hundred, yeah. The downtown, like, that's running around barricades, tables, and then all this was in there for last year. That was twenty-five hundred. So it just gives you an idea, you know, there is, there's lots of snow to be hauled to the rail jam. It is, it is time-consuming and with labor and equipment.
I wonder if, I don't know what Council wants to do regarding this Winter Carnival budget or whatever, but I think maybe the committee should be made aware of those numbers, so that perhaps they could...
They have been.
They have been?
We have a debrief, and I think, Jill, you may have been there, not last year, but the year before. And, yeah, we'll work on it, we'll work on it, but, you know, it's hard to find volunteers, especially in, you know, in some of these areas.
Okay, so the recommendation, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, I guess there's a number of ways that we can look at it. Is there any way that the Winter Carnival has the ability to pay for, you know, I mean, if we budget it, you know, six thousand or something, and then above and beyond, they have to come up with the revenue to pay the city back if they want the work done? Or otherwise, we lower the service level if, you know, if that's what Council chooses. But it seems to be escalating to the point where it's getting, I mean, it's double, right? Three times almost.
Well, like, the bobsled, for example, 2012 was thirty-two, 2013 was forty-three. It's mainly, it's mainly, the rail jam is the largest in downtown. You know, now with the ice bar, we're there loading it, the snow up with our, with the equipment, hauling in clean snow, you know, it's...
It's a lot.
It's time-consuming. And we've been lucky, we haven't run into overtime on that stuff, except for the Saturday, because it hadn't been snowing, you know, on the Friday, Friday, Thursday night, Friday.
Counselor Moore.
I wonder if we could set a limit. I mean, the Winter Carnival is a great event, and it brings a lot of people to communities. Really good commercially for the, for the, you know, downtown and all the rest of it. So I wonder if we could set a limit to say, okay, we will not spend more than ten thousand dollars on it, and if it's a bad snow year, they may have to cancel the rail jam, because if that's the big money sink, that year, it might have to be canceled if there's gonna be hauling too much snow or something for that, or something, right? We just have to somehow control it, and maybe even day of the game, we have to say, we can't do it, you know, if we get close to it.
Of course, the trouble with that is if they plan it, whatever, and we don't know until a few days before if we're gonna be able to do it.
Yeah, they have some pretty big sponsors that come in, you know, like the Oakley, tractor trailer.
Well, then they should put up more money for it.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm just, the rail jam isn't, is expensive, because they are making it bigger, so you can't even, you can't even store that much snow on Queen Street anymore. You gotta, we've gotta haul it, so...
Even a good snow year.
Even a good snow year.
Counselor Boney.
Okay, so again, I'm getting away from my usual numbers and cents recording attitude. But, you know, Winter Carnival here is huge. I mean, we've got accommodators who know six months ahead of time that they're full on Winter Carnival weekend. I mean, you know, I think what this means is we just have to budget more realistically as the city overwhelms them. And, yeah, we just have to pay attention to the numbers and make sure that we sign ahead. But I don't see, I don't see any intelligence, I guess, in raining in service levels on a weekend like this, but it's just too important to the community and to the economy, I think.
Yeah, I certainly agree that it's very important to the economy, no question. It's a great thing for the city, I mean, the Winter Carnival last year went all the way to Norway. No, it's a brilliant way to highlight our city. I think what we should do, if Council should do, or maybe what we should do in some form, is just to inform, and I'm sure they have been told, that there is a limit to how much we can do, right? And we as Council, I think that was well said, that we budget realistically, I think that was very well said. And so that we budget realistically, and we recognize the success of Winter Carnival, and we also recognize that, I think, a big thing is, as Darren mentioned, that one of our operators is not donating his time anymore to the rail jam, and that's, that was huge. So that, with all that being said, I think we come to budget time, this year's budget time. We, hopefully that comes up very quickly, we make decisions on what kind of numbers we put out here, and they're aware. And I think that that's where this decision would come. I think the recommendation now is to, is to approve their requests, that's right, isn't it? Yeah, to approve their requests. I don't know what kind of timeline they need to, you know, to plan any further. Do they need to know... Do they need to know that we're gonna say no to anything, or are we gonna budget accordingly and say, next year, we're gonna have to look at it again? That's up to council. Counselor Thatcher?
Well, sadly, Winter Carnival is, is the premier event for Roseland, like, the, the people that, that are in town, you know, the accommodators, the restaurants, the bars, they're all, they're all busy that weekend. See, we do have to, you know, stick, you know, close to our budget. Uh, is, is there any way, like, a private contractor would take on a donation role in that, you know, say for the rail jam or the ice bar? Maybe we should approach the Winter Carnival committee and see if that, if that is a feasible situation, like, you know, there is a couple contractors in town that might be able to help, you know, help it out, you know, especially for this year.
Does that affect any contracts?
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's been, it's, oh, sorry. It's, it's been discussed in, in previous meetings, um, you know, it, just, but at the last minute, when, you know, everything's a go and the contractor is busy doing something else, who do they call? Right, they call us, and, you know, we're not gonna say no. It's, it's Friday night or Thursday night, you gotta get it going. So, I think those discussions could take place, and, and maybe, uh, you know, maybe it would work okay. Especially if we can get tandem trucks hauling to the rail jam, that would make a huge difference. And like you said, a loader on Saturday, a donated loader would be, would be a huge difference.
So, yeah.
Do we ever see a, a financial from Winter Carnival about how much money? Could they, they charge for certain events and whatnot, do we, I mean, maybe they could up their fees a bit too and contribute more on some of these things? I have no idea what the committee brings in.
I have not from the financial department.
No.
Interesting. I mean, I know, I'm sure that they're a nonprofit, they're not making money, but maybe if they're, you know, charging 25 cents or something, they could charge about 54, you know, we could increase the revenue.
Okay, so, where are we with this? We, the, the recommendation is, as I said, to, uh, approve these? So, do we wanna approve them, subject to budget? What do you wanna do here? Need somebody to make some kind of motion, or do you want me to make?
Well, I think there's a motion on the table, right?
The motion is to accept?
The motion is, okay, so, I'd like to know if we could amend the motion to have staff talk with the committee and, and, you know, say there is a limit to what we can do, and encourage them to do some of these ideas that Counselor Thatcher had, like getting, going out for other people to do some of the work on a volunteer basis, getting them to increase their revenue generating ideas themselves, you know, that kind of thing. Not just, I mean, I'm, we can approve it for this year, but we're not getting the message to them that, that this isn't an empty, you know, a bottomless pit, right? Unless we do that.
So, yeah, so we can go ahead with this, approve it for this year, and we'll follow up with a little report to them saying the costs, as Darren's just highlighted, per year has gone, whatever, write down the events, and say that somehow we're gonna point out that these costs have to be brought in under control, or find other alternatives, or council budgets more. Yes, Ms. Butler?
Your worship, um, when we send a letter telling them that their request has been approved, we can write in there, um, discussion about the concern over the budget?
That'd be great.
Is that okay with you, counsel? Counselor's fair?
Yeah, and, and, you know, make it, you know, clear that, um, council will be reviewing the Winter Carnival, um, budget, um, and having conversation about, you know, what is realistic for the city of Roseland to contribute.
Yeah, that's...
Because, you know, regardless, honestly, I know Winter Carnival's huge. I'm out there volunteering and doing everything like, you know, a lot of other people. But, um, you know, you, you make it bigger and better by having more services, and so it wouldn't have been bigger and better if the city of Roseland hadn't have contributed double the, the service. So, I mean, it could become a huge, you know, it could become the Quebec Winter Carnival if you wanted it to, if you had the budget, but the reality is, I mean, we're always talking about, well, you know, talking about budget, and, you know, I mean, we have to be realistic, and, and so does the committee. So, and I think maybe we should have a little conversation, whether it's with the, you know, I don't know if you even have the street state committee or whatever the committee is, where we come together and with, as, you know, re- city representatives, and sit down and, and talk to them and brainstorm ways to, um, to ameliorate the, the costs, because if they think it's open-ended, then it doesn't make sense.
Well, I don't see they think it's open-ended, but...
Well, seemingly, it is open-ended, though.
Yeah, but they just don't know, right?
Right.
And actually, to be, I don't know until I get the figures, you know, a week after Winter Carnival's over.
Right.
So, it's...
Okay, so I think we, I think we go to good direction here.
We've covered it from all angles.
Okay, so we have a motion. On that motion, all in favor? Posed, motion's carried, and staff will send a nice note to the committee. Thank you very much. Request for decision zoning amendment, uh, recreation cabin planning assistance. Uh, the motion, the staff request is that, uh, council not advance. I'm gonna remind council that we've, council has been down this road quite a few times now. Council approved first and second reading of this. We had a public hearing of this where there was no, one came and spoke against it. We have a staff report saying the issues that were turned back to staff at the last meeting, that's been answered, so I suggest after all this time, we either move to third and final reading, or we turn this down this evening. I would suggest third and, third reading would be appropriate, but I need someone to move that, move by. Counselor Bloom, is that your, you better say it, although it's another thing I said.
I move that we advance this application.
Sure, the third, third and final reading?
Yeah.
We can do that, right?
Your worship, we need third reading first?
Yeah, so just say third reading.
Third reading.
Second or? Counselor Thatcher, discussion?
I just, um, I mean, I just, it's, throughout the story, I've been in favor of the application, of the application, because, um, I don't, I mean, it is our prerogative to make exceptions to the rules, and, um, I just don't understand, or I don't see how this really affects other things or people or anything, so I believe that the landowners should just be able to do what they would like within the boundaries of this.
Thank you, Counselor Thatcher.
Well, it is, it's such a, a, a big chunk of property. If we didn't advance this, I think something would be, be built there probably illegally, who knows? Uh, it's, as I say, it is a huge, a huge piece of property. It's probably better to have some type of control over it than not. You know, it's way up there on the mountain, um, way as explained, the cabins wouldn't be seen from the run, it'd be built below the run, so if we, if we have some control over it now, I think it'd be, uh, stop anything illegal being built up there or something.
Thank you, counsel Moore?
I don't think it'll stop anything that's gonna happen there one way or the other. Um, my problem with this is I still find the recreation cabin and the accessory recreation cabin silly. I mean, I think what, what we're talking about is building two recreation cabins on the parcel, and with the staff report of saying, well, okay, if you read the interpretation by law, you read them together. Well, if you read accessory use, it's incidental to the main building. Accessory building means incidental garage or shed, not for human habitation. So, if you read accessory recreation cabin, I think it would be a second recreation cabin, not used for human habitation, incidental to the first recreation cabin, with the same size specs as recreational cabin. So, to me, it's like, why are we doing it this way? And I honestly don't understand. Why don't we just say two recreation cabins? The other thing that still bothers me is in the height thing, where it says maximum height, 15 meters for principal building, 6 meter for accessory building, you know, it's like, okay, in, in this, you know, since we're just talking about rec cabins for this, then that, you go back to the definition of that, that's 6 meters for the rec cabin. So, I'd rather in the definition, it says 6 meters for recreation cabins and accessory buildings and accessory rec cabins. I mean, it's just silly, I don't know why, actually, that is a question I'd like to ask through the staff. Why don't we just say two rec cabins instead of this accessory rec cabin thing?
You could say two recreation cabins, and there was subdivision. Initially, it was drafted that way, so we continued on that. Basically, so no, the property couldn't be subdivided. So, one recreation cabin had to occur with the other ones. You couldn't split the, the property, and that's why, one. You have two, then it could, in theory, you could come along and subdivide it, and then you could have two separate parcels, and then you could sell off one.
Could you subdivide it anyway with two? Subdivide and then have two and two?
No.
No. Okay, I mean, you know, at this point, it doesn't matter, it just, um...
And the height is in the definition of recreation cabin.
Okay, thank you, thanks, thanks.
It is...
Counselor's fair, yeah, that's common. No?
Yeah, I do.
Well...
Um, you know, this is a pretty prime area, the ski hill, to be honest, and I know Red Mountain doesn't own it, but the less cabins on the jumbo run, the better, as far as I'm concerned. So, from a skier's point of view, who skis that area a lot, you know, why two cabins and not one? I mean, the staff, staff recommendation is to not approve the recreational cabin and the accessory recreational cabin, so that there just is one cabin there. I've got that clear, right? That's the recommendation. So, you know, I'm coming from it, I mean, if that's the staff recommendation, there's no access to that piece of property, and there's been no proof in any report that I've seen or from the owner of the property that there is going to be a legal road access there. It's a island within Red Mountain's properties, and if Red Mountain doesn't grant a road access, then they have no access, so this is a mute thing, right? It's just a whole ridiculous process. Um, have we heard from anyone that has said that they're gonna grant road access? No, we have not, as far as I understand.
Well, that's, that's gonna be up to him, it's not...
Yeah, it's gonna be up to him. I'm going to vote in favor of the staff recommendation, because I...
So, you're voting against the motion?
Yep.
Okay, anything further?
Um, so, throughout this process, I mean, I've, I agree with Counselor Moore on the, the matter of the definition. Um, I mean, ultimately, when I say I support the application, it's just like, why? The application ultimately was they wanted to put another cabin, and in my little head, I think, why can't they just put another cabin? Um, because I don't see them affecting anybody, and, and, you know, I, I just agree with, with Counselor Moore's position, but I actually, I think the more cabins, the better, you know, on a, on a ski run. I think that's a, a good character-filled little thing about Red Mountain. I think it's a, it's a benefit, if anything. Um, so, anyway, I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that we are here at, um, you know, the stages, the readings, as we are, and we didn't hear back from the proponents that, you know, the specifics about the, the definitions not suiting the proponents. So, um, you know, I guess I'm constantly going forward that the recreation, or no, sorry, the accessory recreation building definition somehow suits their needs. So, that's why I'm moving forward, although I do agree with the whole definition thing of why not just, if you're gonna do it at all, why not just let it be, so...
Okay. Counselor's fair?
So, just for clarification, through your worship, two planning, um, department planning. Um, so, recreational building, accessory building, which is like, it's non-residential. They can't stay in there. It's like the garage of the cabin, right? So to speak, the woodshed, whatever you wanna call it. But in talking to the proponents, the proponents said to me, two cabins, right? Two clearly.
Accessory, it's a recreational cabin and an accessory recreational cabin. Accessory meaning one has to occur there...
Before the other.
Before the other.
Yes, so that it can't be. It can't be any way, but anyway, yeah.
They can be exactly, they can, they, they can be exactly the same size, though, these two cabins. Yeah, they can be two cabins, clearly two cabins, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna call a question on third reading. Okay, all in favor of third reading? Posed, motion's carried. Would you like to make a motion to adopt the bylaw?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the bylaw.
Move by Counselor Bloom, second by Counselor Thatcher. Further discussion, anything new? Or not all in favor? Posed, it's carried, thank you. Yeah. Stacy, go. Thanks, Stacy. Members' reports.
Aren't we doing anything on curriculum, you tell me?
No, members' reports. Members' reports. Hello? You wanna start?
Yes, sir, I'll start. Um, well, the first thing I had was my motion on the delegation by law, but in conversation with the mayor, um, I'm gonna withdraw this, and as you know, I'm very interested in this issue, but I anticipate that we're going to get some helpful recommendations from the auditor general, and I think I'll just perhaps wait until a later date to, uh, address that. At least I won't address, won't be addressing it tonight.
Thank you very much.
While we take that motion. Um, in terms of other things, um, okay, I went to the opening of the Seventh Summit Learning Center, and it was, it was great, it really, this community, oh, the big thanks to all the people involved. The volunteer board has done a great job. I think they're up to 31 students, and it's really, it's really inspirational facility, it's great. I also went to the sculpture walk gala in Castlegar, and it was amazing. I talked to some people there, they, they've been doing it, um, for four years. There were some business people there that said they were really skeptical at first. They're like, oh, you know, what's this about? They said their business has increased by 30% by having this event that gets promoted, and people come to, you know, cultural tourists and, and all of that. Um, our, our CAC is gonna be bringing a proposal to council to do some, to get involved in some way. Um, I don't know the details of that. Um, I just wanted to comment on the newsletter from Tours in Roseland. It seems like they have really been busy. They've, they've been doing some great stuff, and I think, uh, Deion Stevens has done a wonderful job. Looks like the shuttle, the film, the ski shows, the Winter Carnival promo card, the billboard, the signs, the escape guide, which is great, by the way, if anybody's looked at it. Um, and the fact that they shared the award for the best, uh, community initiative in the powder, powder throwdown. So, really well done, I think they're, they're a great credit to the community. Um, also, I appreciated the staff briefing that we had, uh, before the other meeting that, that Counselor Spardon and I attended. I think it's really important that council get updated and appreciate the effort. Um, my observation was that there was nothing said at that meeting that couldn't have been said in, in a council meeting, and that way, any public would have heard the same, the same update. So, I, I'd like to see if, um, you know, no decisions are made at these events, it's not that, it's not that kind of thing. I would like to just have our procedure by law amended to include just a line on our agenda, staff update, and the staff could give us those updates. That way, anyone in the, in the public can hear it, the press can hear it, that kind of thing. I think it's, um, you know, would be a good way to, good way to do it. So, I have a notice of motion tonight that I will drop off, that basically says sometime in the new year, this is not a critical issue, but sometime in the new year, that we could, um, you know, have that added to our agenda. And in the meantime, I might just make a motion at the beginning of meetings that we add a staff briefing, and if the staff has nothing to say, then they, you know, they don't have the, to say. Anything that's confidential could be added as a staff briefing and a mini-camera, so there's no need that, that, uh, we have to worry about things that aren't appropriate for the public. Um, let's see. Oh, okay, um, no, I'm not gonna do that. Okay, no, I think that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Bloom.
Um, okay, so there's an interesting story behind that escape guide that Tours in Roseland has put together, but I, um, we have a, a meeting on Thursday, and board meeting, and so, um, I think we need to carry the story through a little further before I can go to the foregone property. Um, so, wait till next time. Um, and then, uh, here's the thing.
I don't know if you might wanna wait?
Pardon me? Okay.
If it hasn't done yet.
Okay, sure. And, um, yeah, so I guess, you know, we have a lot of, there are other meetings for the Chamber of Commerce, the legislature, Roseland in the coming weeks, so there's more to talk about next coming. Okay, okay.
Great, thanks. Counselor's fair?
Well, I haven't, um, the Sustainability Commission meeting is tomorrow, and the Neighborhood of Learning has been, of course, busy with the Seventh Summit Learning Center kinda supporting that, um, that...
Sustainability, sorry to interrupt you, Sustainability's tomorrow?
Tomorrow's Wednesday, yeah.
Do you want to off the mailing list now, or...
Three, isn't it tomorrow, is it in the next week? Yeah, tomorrow, true.
Okay.
There you go. Um, and attended the Remembrance Day, um, of course, parade in downtown yesterday was great, usual great turnout by Roselanders, and, um, paying their respects to, uh, to the veterans, um, from all of the wars, so I always appreciate that, and I think that is all I have to report.
Thank you very much. I'm not ignoring or including any more.
Oh, no, oh, there was one of the, you know, there was...
That's, uh, go ahead, please.
I put your, uh, one of them written down. It was, it was a takeoff on something else someone said, but...
Okay, well, we'll take off over to Counselor Thatcher, if you remember, let me know.
Uh, first of all, I'd say it was nice to see us, Ros, City Roseland, be raised so high and being fiscally responsible, that was a good article there. I thought it was, I thought that was interesting...
I thought it was, I thought that was an interesting, interesting article. On the museum front, uh, Vince Perfugio, he's stepping down off the board of directors for the museum. Uh, the new name for the museum is the Roslin Museum and Discovery Center. Uh, it's got a tagline, metals, mountains, and memories, so that's gonna be, uh, that's the, how it's gonna be set up. The attendance this year was up about nine hundred people. They're hopefully looking at some, uh, some pop-up storefront, mu- museum displays for the winter, they there's talk about putting some displays and pictures of that in some of the empty storefronts, which might be nice for, uh, any tourists in town. Annual General, General Medias, November twenty-eighth, at seven o'clock, prestige. Uh, also, that's the same day that, uh, Donald Luxon's gonna be making a presentation with Gateway.
Counselor's invited.
Yeah, is it, we haven't had a notified time for that, have we?
One, one, one o'clock.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Great. By the time it gets to me, I've got nothing left to say. As you already said, there's a Tours and Roslin meeting on Thursday, and I've had some discussions, as per discussions at the ECM regarding uh, the appropriateness of counselors sitting on boards, where they vote at the same time, and, and the boards are funded. So I've had some preliminary discussions, and I suggest that the board of directors of Tours and Roslin look at amending to move counselors away from voting positions, for sure, for sure, for sure, for sure, and uh, once you're not a voter, then you're probably not involved in a quorum, because you can't vote, right? So you wouldn't make up a quorum. So, we're gonna have discussions, uh, Thursday about that, and uh, just for everyone's, remind everybody that it's a, it's not a Roslin, City of Roslin Board, it is Tours and Roslin Board, so it's their decision, but I, I am gonna recommend that counselors, any counselor acts as a liaison only, because it gets a little bit messy, as we've been explained, right? So that's where I'll leave that for now, uh. So I would now entertain a motion to recess to in camera, subject to section ninety-one C, labor relations of the community charter, moved by. Spier and seconded by Thatcher. All in favor? Carried. We pause, and we will be in camera. Thanks, Press, and thanks, Timothy, for getting that out for us, thank you very much.